Welcome to the September 10, 2018, School District 6 Board Meeting. This meeting will now come to order. Will you join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pause there. Roll call, Ms. Crane.
Mr. DeWitt.
Present.
Mr. Hayfley.
Present.
Mr. Lydiak.
Mr. Lydiak is out of the country, so he's excused.
Mr. Matthews.
Present.
Ms. Pappas.
Present.
Dr. Richard.
Present.
Mrs. Solis.
Present.
Six members present.
Thank you, ma'am. Under the Board of Education President announcements, I do have a couple of comments to make. They usually run kind of in tandem with our three kind of operational terms that we established for ourselves a couple of years ago: engage, empower, and inspire. And under engagement, I wanted to note that we've, as a district, we've increased the salary, the kind of communications we have, and an effort to maintain and build the category of substitute teachers. And nobody is better for your child in a classroom than their primary teacher. But we do occasionally rely on a substitute to come in, and we need to make sure that we have the best substitutes we can get. And the salary increase and the attention being paid, I think, to subs is something that helps us continue to engage with our students even when a primary instructor is out of the room. So I thought that was a good thing to share and celebrate. Under empower, I do want to thank the classified staff who find ways to fix everything that may be a little older than it might be. Every time I see one of our rusted yellow repair trucks, and every time we see one of the older school buses. I used to say they're as old as I am, and someone told me that's impossible. So, but we do treasure our equipment and our buildings in ways that other districts oftentimes don't, and dispose of that piece of machinery, or that truck, or that vehicle. And we don't so much do that. And we have the staff who lovingly keep those important items safe and useful and have an extended life, and so we certainly thank them. And that does empower the district to meet its safety obligations toward students and employees, but it stretches the dollar a little bit better every time they're successful at that. And I do want to mention an adventure that we had with some elected representatives from Congress, from Denver, and also other Colorado Association of School Board members that took part in a visit to a couple of our schools last week. Early College Academy and Brentwood Middle School, we put on a little come and see what our average day is like. And elected representatives and other school board members dropped by, and nothing out of the ordinary, it's just everyday work in our school district, but they appreciated what was going on, and we interrupted, I'm sure, the normal operation of those two schools. But the staff and the students just moved on about their business, and it was a pleasure to see such good things going on, and being able to demonstrate that to our colleagues throughout the state. The next item on the agenda is the hearing of persons desiring to speak before the Board, and normally this is an opportunity for an individual to offer a couple of minutes' worth of opinion or observation. The Board doesn't necessarily respond immediately, but it gives us the opportunity to pursue that individual if there's a connection that needs to be made within the district. And the only person who's expressed an interest in speaking this evening is Greeley resident, Mr. Don Pearl, former District 6 employee and instructor extraordinaire at UNC. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, everybody. Okay, I'm Don Pearl, and I live in Greeley, and Happy New Year to everybody. This is the Jewish New Year.
Indeed, but let's move into the microphone, sir. Someday we'll need it.
Thank you.
Do I get to start again?
No, no. Happy Rosh Hashanah. Yes, Happy New Year to all of you. This is the first full day of the Jewish New Year, and this is a coup de grace, I'll tell you later, but let it be a happy and healthy year. And I'm going to emphasize "healthy" right now, because we have the opportunity to inch the wheel of history toward a better health, particularly here. And that is about Proposition 112, which was Ballot Initiative '97, is now on the ballot, and we implore you, I say "we" because I'm not alone here, even though it doesn't look like I am. So we implore you to, as a school board, to get behind Proposition 112. We have a real chance here to improve the health of our children. Okay, I have some, this is from the National Scientific Council on the Developing Child. It's a very brief quote: "Fracking at distances that are now approved allow for volatile organic compounds to have a devastating effect on developing immune systems." Also, and this is underlined, "The immature brain is more vulnerable to these toxic exposures than the mature brain." And we know, we know what happens to children who are exposed to oil and gas. I'm going to pause that for a moment, because there is a YouTube video, five-minute YouTube video by a mom who is also a doctor, who came forward on Channel 7 News last month, and I would be very happy to send you the link, and you could look at that YouTube video. It's very impactful. Okay, be brave. Sometimes it's very hard to address the fears that you might have to really support something like this, but I am imploring you, encouraging you, to talk about your fears among yourselves, and vent them, and then be brave and support this proposition. Now the coup de grâce. I'm out of time. Choose life.
Happy New Year.
Shalom. You know what shalom means?
Indeed.
Peace. And this is wachayim, which is about the extent of my Yiddish vocabulary.
To life.
Keep it exhausted.
Lachayim. Thank you, sir.
Ms. Crane, we just spent a couple hours upstairs working on some things, and you have some notes that reflect that under the work session report. I wonder if you'd share those.
I would be happy to. Could we come back to it after the superintendent's report?
Yeah, you're going to put me on the spot, because the technology's not working, aren't you? But you know I got this.
I'm just going to let whoever wants to speak start right up. Dr. Pilch, would you like to take over and do the superintendent's report first?
Thank you, President DeWitt. It seems that our Board Docs software has let us down a little bit, but I'm sure we'll all get back online. I would just start first with talking about our visit to Centennial Elementary last Friday morning. We had a school visit. Many of our school board members were able to be with us that morning, and it was such a wonderful celebration to be at Centennial Elementary School, which has now moved to a performance school in the state ranking. They have been on the accountability clock with the Colorado Department of Education, and this, they were going into year five, so this is the year we would have had to have gone before the Colorado Department of Ed, to be ranked and spanked, as you all have heard me call it before, and we won't be going before the State Department, because Centennial Elementary is a performance school. But it was really joyful to be at the school Friday morning, and to have the staff and the principal, assistant principal, share the work that they've been engaging in. And I think you all can see as a board, and I will attest to it for our community, that we are getting the results we're getting at Centennial because of a very intentional plan, a plan around rigorous instruction and content, and high expectations, and high support for students. And children are accessing on-grade level content with the appropriate supports, and as a result, our students there are achieving, and they are growing dramatically. We saw the greatest growth in the district at Centennial Elementary School, outpaced the state by more than 10%. And so we are just so pleased and such an honor to be there last Friday morning and get a chance to visit about the work that is going on there at Centennial. So thank you to those of you who were able to be with us. I also want to just reference the visit you talked about, Mr. DeWitt, with our legislative representatives and our Colorado School Board Association representatives, and a couple of board members from Brighton stayed on the tour all day, because their district was the first district visited that day. So they started their day at Brighton, and then they went next door over here to Valley, and then came to us. And we were able to really talk about the work we're doing at both Brentwood and at Early College. And again, we chose Brentwood, because Brentwood was a school that was on the accountability clock just three years ago, and they moved to performance and have maintained that performance rating for three years. So we're really proud of the work, and they are an exemplar for what's going well at middle schools in District 6. And then Early College Academy, of course, is such a pride point for all of us, which we would, again, a huge shout-out to Ames Community College. We would not have that program if it were not for the support and partnership with Ames Community College. So really, a great afternoon, especially appreciative of Representative Janet Buckner, who is, as I understand now, the co-chair for the Education Legislative Committee, such a huge advocate for public education, and she spent the entire day in schools, and it was just a pleasure to have her with us. And the important question she asked about the work we're doing, you know she is wanting to make a difference for children throughout the state of Colorado in her leadership. And then finally, I want to tell you what I did Friday afternoon. So I started the morning at Centennial, you know, really, the most important of instruction taking place, and then I ended my day with one of our bus drivers. So I started out at the bus barn at about 2:15 and met up with one of our bus drivers, and we took off about 2:40 or so and picked up at Hyman Elementary. Bus driver, Mr. Ken, some of the students calling coach, but we took off to Hyman Elementary, picked up over 60 kindergarten through 5th graders, delivered them to home, and then from there went over to Prairie Heights Middle School, picked up about 35 or 46 7th and 8th graders, and then delivered them home. And I was back at the Transportation Department about 4:45 or so. But I will tell you, I did not know what to expect, really. I hadn't done a full bus run route with one of our drivers in my time as superintendent, something I wanted to do. I am so excited to report, our children were remarkable. They were curious and funny, and wanted to know who this lady was on the bus, and what are you doing here, and what is your job? Two little kindergartners, who I sat with, two little kindergartners said, "Well, will you ride with us every day?" So I said, "Only if I could." Oh, how I wish I could. But, and then the bus driver, Ken, he has done a remarkable job building relationships and rapport with the children who are riding his bus. Here we are, just weeks, barely weeks into school, he knew most of the children by name. He has systems in place to reward appropriate behavior and to encourage the best in the children. And you know, it was just a lot of fun, and really made me proud to be a part of District 6, and to spend the afternoon on the bus with the children. I get to be with kids a lot at activities and in schools, but to be on their school bus with them, and to ride with them, and visit with them in that way, was really special for me. And to see one of our drivers working in that way was just really a great way to end my week last week, so I wanted to share it with you. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thanks for sharing that. Appreciate knowing it. Should I look your way, Ms. Crane? Should I ask for the work session report? Ms. Crane, may I have the work session report, please?
Of course, Mr. DeWitt. Board of Education President Roger DeWitt began the work session with comments from board members and reviewed upcoming events on the board calendar. The board briefly discussed their plans for community engagement and received an update on Amendment 73. The board members shared their spending priorities if the district receives additional funding through the approval of Amendment 73, and that concluded the work session.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item is the approval of the agenda, and it would require a motion for us to consider that, please.
I move that the Board of Education of Weld County School District 6 approves the agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Comments about that? Roll call, Ms. Crane.
Mr. DeWitt.
Aye.
Mr. Hayfley.
Aye.
Mr. Matthews.
Aye.
Ms. Pappas.
Aye.
Dr. Richard.
Aye.
Mrs. Solis.
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you, ma'am. The next item for us to work on is the consent agenda, and of course, to consider that, I'll require a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of School District 6 approve the consent agenda as presented and authorize the signature...
Officers.
Officers, well, I can't see it. Officers to sign any and all contracts.
I knew what you meant.
Thank you.
Do I get a second? Thank you both. Comments? I see none. Roll call, Ms. Crane.
Mr. DeWitt.
Aye.
Mr. Hayfley.
Aye.
Mr. Matthews.
Aye.
Ms. Pappas.
Aye.
Dr. Richard.
Aye.
Mrs. Solis.
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you, ma'am. Well, the next item is a cheery opportunity. Item number seven is recognition of sponsors for the school kickoff community celebration. And the community was present for that event, and many of us were present for that event. But Dr. Pilch, I think we want to kind of put some hardware out there and say thanks to people who were involved.
It's an amazing event, as you all know. All of you were able to be a part of it. We could not pull off this event without the tremendous support of our community, the financial support, as well as the people's support. We gave over 3,000 backpacks away to children here in District 6, packed backpacks, had a great event that day, and I know Ms. Myers, our chief of communications, is looking forward to honoring the many volunteers who were in the audience tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch, Mr. DeWitt, and members of the board. Yes, we had a very successful event this year. We gave out 3,800 backpacks, most of them that day. There were a few left over that we were able to give out through special requests at school sites for the couple of weeks after school started. We were able to, thanks to our generous donors, some of them who are in the audience tonight, we were able to bump up the amount of school supplies that we were able to give out to students, both at the elementary and secondary levels. So that was really nice for our kids, and I know that it was much appreciated by the parents. I heard many positive comments about it. Through the help of the Finance Department and Gina Smith, we were able to give out the backpacks in a much more regulated and very smooth manner this year, so people weren't having to wait in lines in the heat for a really long time. So that was a positive part. Just a few numbers, we had over 200 volunteers that helped with this event every year, both with the backpack stuffing and the day of the event. We served 4,000 breakfast burritos that day, so nobody went home hungry, and if they did, it was just because they didn't get a breakfast burrito. We had plenty. We had help from the Success Foundation this year, doing food for our volunteers and our community booth operators. We had more than 80 community booths there, everything from bike rodeo to our law enforcement and fire departments, all were present, really good public relations for our community groups. We did more than 80 sports physicals this year, and that is thanks to Banner Health, our title sponsor, and those were free for the students that were able to get those that day. I know that was a big draw for a lot of people. So anyway, it was just an amazing event, and again, I have to reiterate, it wouldn't be possible without the thousands of dollars of donations that we get from the groups that sponsor this event every year. And so we'd like to go through and recognize them now. Many of them have representatives in the audience, so I appreciate you being here tonight. We will go through this list and start with our title sponsor, which is Banner Health. And they've been with us since the beginning, since 2014, when we started this event. This was our fifth year. Banner is our exclusive healthcare sponsor for the event and our title sponsor. I don't believe they have a representative here tonight. Wendy Sparks told me that she couldn't make it, but we very much appreciate them and their continued support of this event. Next, I would like to recognize our principal sponsors. The first is DS Constructors LLC. You may recognize them, they are the contractors who've been doing work on Meker. They were a principal sponsor of the event at $5,000. Then next to the Greeley Stampede Foundation, and I know Bob Hindoroff is here tonight. Bob? Oh, there he is. We'd like to recognize the Greeley Stampede Foundation for their $5,000 donation this year. We very much appreciate it, and they're new this year, so we very much appreciate them being here. Our next principal sponsor is Extraction Oil and Gas, and I know they were not able to be here tonight, but Greeley Red Eye Rotary is here tonight, and they were also a principal sponsor at $5,000. Chris Dowen is here, he is the president of that organization. And I especially want to thank them, because they actually leverage their own fundraising dollars to apply for a grant through Rotary Clubs that matches that. So they put in $2,500 of their own money, and then got a $2,500 matching grant, so that's why they're able to give the $5,000. So we appreciate them. Next, we'll move to our premier sponsors at $3,000 each, Allied Pediatric Specialists. And I just got an email from Sarah Williams, she had a client tonight that went long, so she was not able to come tonight, but it's nice of them to, they are also a first-time sponsor this year. Next, we have the Montford Family Foundation Fund, operated through the Community Foundation, and I know Rand's here, come up. Rand has been very supportive of this since the beginning. I remember running into him at Woody's Coffee Shop when it was there and saying, and him saying, "What can I do to help you out with that event?" And he's been with us ever since, so we appreciate it. ABC Child Development Centers, I don't think there's anyone here tonight. Scott Bright and his organization has also been very supportive of this event from the first year. Sunrise Community Health, and I know Fatima said she couldn't make it tonight either, they actually came on and bumped up their sponsorship this year to this premier sponsorship, so they've been a great partner with us in this event. High Plains Library District, I don't think they were able to come tonight either. High Plains has also been on since the second year and is a premier sponsor of the event. And I don't know if you guys ever had a chance to go by their booth, but they get hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of kids through that booth getting, I think Kelly told me they did over 300 library cards this year right at the event, so that was an awesome. NCMC Inc., I know they're here, Jeff Carlson, NCMC Inc. has been on, I think, from the first year as well, so we appreciate them very much. And of course, with the support of Banner and NCMC Inc., that's made our event very special. And next, I'm going to bring up Bob Murphy from Floodon Peterson, who has also been here from the beginning, who I actually coerced into saying a few words, so he will actually...
Oh, awesome.
Did you know that?
Yes.
Good evening, Dr. Pilch, President DeWitt, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity. Teresa coerced me into saying a few words, so I thought, what do you say about this event, right? So it started in 2014, and we gave out 775 backpacks, I remember that. And the reason I remember is there's a certain communication director that shall remain nameless, who I was pushing for 1,000 backpacks, who said, "We'll never be able to do that. We'll never be able to do that." So this year, we gave out 3,800 backpacks. So it's been an amazing five years. We've supported this from the beginning, I think it's important for a number of reasons, and I'll be brief, but obviously, it serves a need. When you go from 775 backpacks to 3,800 backpacks in five years, there's a need. And there's nothing better than being a part of a community where you can see the money that you give go to a need. And thank you for the certificate, because there's no need to spend any money on anything except the backpacks, okay? The second thing is, is I think it's great for our community for a couple reasons. It starts our school year off with a big, meaningful bang, and it's great. And the third thing is, is it brings the Evans and Greeley communities together for an important event. And I'm glad that the volunteers were mentioned, because, you know, I always come to these and think, you know, in philanthropy, there's three things, right? There's time, talent, and treasure. John Hayfley knows I have no talent. I didn't volunteer and give my time, we wrote a check. But the people, think about the 200 people that volunteered their talent and time to make this happen. It's impressive. So thank you all for your support, and we will continue to grow and support this, Teresa and board, and thank you.
Bob knows he'll be getting a call in January from me for next year's event. Next, I'd like to recognize our backpack and school supply sponsors. Our first is Staples, they were not able to be here tonight, but they were a backpack and school supply sponsor. The next is the Success Foundation, serving Greeley and Evans. Julie's here. Hi, Julie. Again, I want to mention that the Success Foundation really helped out this year. They actually helped with some of the fundraising too this year by piggybacking this event on their annual breakfast, and getting donations through common companies that we have that we share. So I really appreciate that, Julie. That was a super great... Our backpack sponsors this year were UMB, they are not here tonight. Greeley After Hours Rotary, I don't think anybody's here tonight. They've supported for the last few years too, at the backpack level of $1,000. Trinity Episcopal Church, Otter Cares Foundation, FMS Bank, and I know Patty Gates is just returning from a trip, so she was not here tonight. Ames Community College, and again, Rand is still here, the Community Foundation, serving Greeley and Weld County, and this is through the Littler Youth Fund that we have. Rand here, if you want to come up and grab that one too. Sorry to make you get up again. Our next backpack sponsor is Sea Level Operations, and I know Ken's here, Ken. They've been on board for a long time as well, and have increased their participation in the event, so we appreciate that, Ken. Next, our backpack sponsors, our Savior's Lutheran Church, I don't think they were able to be here tonight. Weld Family Chiropractor Clinic. Weld Schools Credit Union, is Jolene here? Yeah, there she is. They have been a longtime sponsor of this event as well, so we very much appreciate them. Thank you. Last of the backpack sponsors is Tom and Donna Roberts. They're a couple that live in Greeley and have supported this event from the second year or so. Just send me a check, never, never, I never want to come for recognition, but we appreciate them very much. Our school supply sponsors this year at the $500 level were Greeley Vineyard Church, Bullseye Testing Incorporated, La Prina Foods, Slaughter Roofing, First Congregational Church, Ben Kneckie is here. Thank you, Ben, for coming on this year. We really appreciate your support. I think you all know that Ben's wife also teaches at Fred Tardis, so he has many connections to the district. Thank you, Ben. And the City of Greeley was a school supply sponsor, and I'm going to make John Gates come up and get that one for the city, since he's the mayor, as well as our Safety and Security Chief. They also had a very large booth out there for Greeley Unexpected that was very popular, so we appreciate them being there. My last school supply sponsor was Kaiser Permanente, who's been on board for a long time as well. Our lunch sponsors at the $250 level this year were Berkshire Halfway Home Services and the Greeley Education Association. We have a couple representatives from them, if you want to come up really quick. Josh Wainscott and Linda Gundermann are both here tonight representing the Greeley Education Association, and they also have supported this event from the very first year, so we appreciate them very much. The other lunch sponsors are Alpha Kappa Gamma of Greeley, and again, another just individual who sent us a check, Bonnie Shunover, a former District 6 teacher who just wanted to help out with the event, so we appreciate her. And then finally, our last lunch sponsor is North Range Behavioral Health, and I think Gloria Zello and Juanita Puja are here tonight. Thank you, guys. Again, North Range has been with us for a long time, helping sponsor this event, and I think you all realize what important partnership we have with them, so we want to thank them. Thank you, guys. And finally, our pencil sponsors this year at $100 level. New to our event this year, Amanda Redloff from 31. Amanda did a fundraiser through her business for us, and raised enough money to be a sponsor this year, so we really appreciate Amanda being here and for helping with the event. And she was out there the day of the event too, so she got to see all the fun and action. Our next pencil sponsor is Greeley PFAG and Northern Colorado Pride, represented by Pat Kennedy tonight, and they also have been a longtime sponsor of the event, and we very much appreciate them being out there. They had a community booth this year, and I know that they got to help a lot of kids and families, so we appreciate you. Thank you. And our last two pencil sponsors, we're not able to be here tonight, but it's the PEO Chapter 4 and the Nerd Store downtown in Greeley, who also has helped us out significantly throughout the years with our teachers' closets, so we appreciate them very much. So anyway, if we could just give one more round of applause to all our sponsors for the school kickoff. If those of you who could come, so thank you. If those of you who could come, so thank you.
I'm going to apologize.
You're fine. I don't need to breathe. Once again, thanks to everyone, and for some reason, some are leaving, even though there's a lot more excitement on the agenda. Thank you. Good night. Go home, do your homework. The next item is the First Read of Policy, AEE, waiver of state law and regulation. And if you don't mind, Dr. Pilch, I'm just going to mention what it says at the very first paragraph, the introduction. The Board of Education believes that many state laws and regulations impede the district's progress toward achieving its mission. Therefore, the Board directs the superintendent to work with the district legal counsel, accountability committee, and school principals to just riddle through some of these objectionable factors. So if you don't mind taking an intro from here as to what we're up to, but it just kind of makes sense that if those things are in our way and we have permission to slide them aside, we should certainly do that.
This came as a result of changes from the Colorado School Boards Association. I don't know if we'll ever use this policy, but we're allowed to have it, and so I'm proposing that we have it. As you all know, when a charter school proposal comes before you, there will often be requests for waiving of district policy or of state policy or state guidelines, and this allows us to do something similar.
Well, and when we've created unique relationships for schools on performance or something, we have taken that obligation, but now we can do it under other circumstances potentially, okay? Comments or questions from board members? Dr. Richard, please.
So can you give us some examples of some state laws that can be waived?
Is that...
No. I can't. That's a great question. I really was leaning more towards state regulations, you know, that Colorado Department of Ed would bring forward. In terms of state laws, I, no, I really can't, I can't come forward with one. I suppose with all the new requirements that are coming down, let's say, around the management of student data and student privacy, I suppose if there was something that our board was saying, "We simply cannot do that because we don't have the financial ability to manage that in that way," then we could choose to try to appeal to have that state law waived or a state law waived. It would have to be because we weren't able to deliver on that requirement. So I have one for a small district, where a small district might use this.
Okay.
So I have some superintendent colleagues in some of our very small rural districts who are actually petition, will actually use this policy to petition to waive state law around the school performance frameworks and the district performance framework and their school accountability ratings, and ask for different data to be utilized for that, and a more, actually a more robust system to be utilized in those systems. And that would be a request to waive state law, to have that exception. So I think you all may have heard about this, even a Casby Buffalo School District in Moreno is using that system. That would fall into this.
So if we didn't have this policy, we still could accomplish the same thing, however. I mean, if you found that there was something, a regulation or a law that was impeding our mission, you could still come to the board and we could authorize it, whether we had this policy or not.
Sure. Oh, sure. What this does is it allows the board and the superintendent to work together to say, you know, "We want to waive this. We want you to, we want to take this to the State Board of Education." So it codifies a practice, but sure, we could, without a policy, sure, we could.
So, I mean, as I'm rolling, the Board of Education believes that many state laws and regulations impede. That word "many" caught me, as in predominantly, most of, I mean, I don't know, "many" seemed a little...
That's fair. That's fair, and that's really Casby language. I mean, this is your policy, this is a first read, and I am happy to take back revisions on it.
So I guess the word "many" does strike me as maybe over the top, but that there are, that there may be state laws and regulations that impede, but just for food for thought and reaction from board members on that as well.
Dr. Richard, if I may then, maybe suggesting the Board of Education believes that state laws and regulations may impede the district's progress.
Right. But bottom line is, with or without this policy, we can still do this.
Sure, you can. Sure, you can. This is actually Casby codifying some known regulations that school districts have said, "We're just not going to follow that." So, you know, other examples would be where districts have not enforced the regulations around student test-taking.
There's some features...
Where the state hasn't followed their own law, in that case.
And there've been things associated with working conditions and so forth, but I guess from my voice, once it gets squeezed in here for some reason, is that anything the board comes up with would still have to go through the state. So it's not as if this policy would permit us to just, you know, make up our own rules. All we're doing is identifying a process by which the board might single out a practice that's impeding our progress. I don't see it as a harmful thing. It says what we can do, but I'm happy with substituting "may" for "many."
You know, the area where I get, and you all have heard it, where I get uncomfortable with the state oversight of a local district is when our legislators or even our State Board of Education are making policies and procedures that we are then required to find people and other resources to implement those policies and procedures. An example would be when districts were required to begin the individual career in academic planning, the new requirements with graduation requirements, and allowing for capstone projects. All of those things came to us through state law and then down through the State Department of Education, and they require additional staff resources and additional technology resources, like our Naviance program, in order to manage the ICAPS. So that's where I start to get really scratchy about oversight from the state level, is when we're having demands put on us that are financial demands without additional resources coming with those demands. And there could be some, what this policy does is it says, "Okay, school districts, we've heard you. We've heard you, so we're going to give you a sample policy that you can use to say, 'I want to enact our right to not follow state law and state regulation.'"
Well, I think it also specifies a couple of features of timing, and that we can't just act as a board and identify a change. There's a series of days and steps to follow, so it does tell us not just that we can do this, but the process that should match state law.
Which is equally as important to the opportunity to do this, is that they're outlining the process in which to do it.
Other comments, questions? All right, a roll call, Ms. Crane. Oh, I guess not, because with this a first read. I always see, I was going to do a roll call when I didn't need to for a change. Okay, great.
And we'll come back...
We'll chat more about this.
Yes, and President DeWitt, we will come back with that change in language, as well as, we'll circle back with our lobbyists and see what else we might have missed around kind of what's behind this, and if there's additional information, we'll bring that to you.
Thank you.
Dr. Pilch, the next item, unless I'm again in error, is the Innovation 2020 Update, an operational organizational effectiveness priority number one in the communications area of Innovation 2020. And I turn to you to take the lead on this, please.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. So, you know, in our summer work session, we began this work of, you know, really aligning our board updates to our strategic plan. So what you see tonight, and I think it's the second one of the year that we've done in this way, what you see tonight, or will see tonight, is an update around our operational and organizational effectiveness goal, priority one, which is in relation to communications with our stakeholders. And I'm going to invite Teresa Myers to come, and she is the chair of this work team, and I've invited her to come up and to share with you an update on the work and how we're actually implementing this goal and measuring this goal.
Well, thank you, Dr. Pilch, and Mr. DeWitt, and the rest of the board members. Thank you for letting me come and update you on the information regarding our operational and organizational effectiveness goal in our Innovation 2020 Plan, which is an important part of the plan and is really meant to support our student achievement and the operations of the district. So as you'll see in this presentation, we, oops, it seemed to want to move. I'm going to ask Ms. Crane to come up and help me troubleshoot this. The next slide is, really just goes over our mission and vision for the school district. As you well know, the mission to provide every student with a personalized, well-rounded, and excellent education in a safe and caring environment, and partnership with families and communities to succeed in tomorrow's world. So moving from the mission to vision, you'll see also on the next page, our values. I'll read through really quickly. Our students' comfort, innovation, and continuous improvement. We ensure safety and healthy schools. We view diversity as an asset. We provide opportunity and choice, and we partner with families and communities. And again, these are just those four big goal areas, student learning and achievement, strengthening partnerships, climate and culture, and operational and organizational effectiveness. And the priority I'll be talking about today does fall under that operational and organizational effectiveness goal. We will be innovative and accountable to the community through measurable outcomes and continuous improvement. And as you can see, priority one is to implement clear and concise communication for internal and external stakeholders. And that's, Dr. Pilch mentioned, we did meet with a large working group of people to develop this plan, both through our operational side and through our academic side. There were principals and assistant principals, teachers on that committee when we first developed this plan, and we consulted with them several times as we've moved through this process to find out really the communication needs of our schools, our students, and our families. So objective one in this goal is to create a communication plan that includes a systematic approach to communicating to all stakeholders and storing documents and information for easy retrieval. And first, I'd just like to go through some of the things that we've been working on over the last year to accomplish that goal. First, we developed and launched a new website, which I know most of you know. That actually occurred in September of last year, so we've had about a year of data and about a year to troubleshoot that process. And it has been very successful. I do think it's an easier-to-access website for our families and really easier for our staff to locate and update information on the website. We launched a new parent notification along, system along with that website that actually pairs with the website, so we can do push notifications through the website that will go out directly to our parents. We also are able to now simultaneously email, call, text, and we'll be able to push, do push notifications through the new mobile app, through a single site, so it's just made that process easier and much quicker. We can do about 20,000 calls in about five minutes, so that's a really quick system, especially for emergency notifications, that we find has been very useful. And we also launched a new mobile app in association with that website in August. We have had a few troubles with getting that to interface with our Infinite Campus system. We thought we had it worked out, and it's still not quite working well, so parents may not be able to access their student information through that mobile app yet, but we'll get out an additional communication once that issue is fixed with our Student Information Services Department, but we are working on that. So this is what the mobile app looks like. If you hadn't had a chance to download it yourself, I would encourage you to do that. It really is a helpful tool. Last year, when we were prototyping it, I downloaded it and was getting all kinds of notifications from my student when she would skip a class or do something naughty, so it was great, I could keep tabs on that. It will give parents information on missing assignments, attendance, they'll be able to access lunch menus and even eventually pay their school balance through their mobile app. So I think that will be a helpful tool for most of our families. And then, of course, a new website design, which is a drastic improvement over our old website design. Some of the other things that have been going on in the Communications Department, and this really is about organizational effectiveness and really using our resources effectively. We went through a reorganization about six months ago. With the help of Dr. Pilch and our CFO, Megan Sponser, I was able to reorganize our department, eliminate a position, and create a new position that I had gotten a lot of feedback from the schools that they really needed more support on their website and really wanted to see more interaction on social media with the district. So we created a position called the Digital Media Specialist. I hired a woman named Kim Desmond to fill that position. She's been doing great work. She has already gone through and done an audit of all the websites and is now communicating with those site managers of what information is missing, what information needs to be updated on those websites to help them, and then really supporting them in that if they don't know how to do it. She's going out and doing training, so that's really helped our school sites have a more robust site. We still have a lot of work to do, but it's getting that information flowing through our schools a little bit more frequently and really getting them to update their websites. So that's been a great help. We are really trying to have an increased social media presence on both Facebook, Twitter. We've opened an Instagram account now, so if any of you have Instagram, you can follow the district on that. And then through our YouTube channel, and that is really about trying to reach our families and our students where they are, and they are on social media, we know that. It's also a way to kind of be able to tell our own story and control our own story without having to, you know, rely so much on the mainstream media to do that for us, when we know that they're struggling too with readership and not being able to get resources to a lot of our events and our meetings even, to tell the story that we need to tell. So we're really relying on other sources and other venues to do that work. And then we've really focused in my department on doing a lot more visual portrayals of what's happening in our schools. We're doing a lot more short videos at sites and posting them immediately. We're trying to have a quicker turnaround on those, and then really improving the photo quality on our website and our social media. And that was another reason why I hired Kim, is because she is actually a professional photographer. She does a great job. So if you notice on our Facebook page, our pictures have improved a lot when Kim's been able to do those. So really getting good images of our students and our teachers and our schools that we can utilize throughout the year for different events and different programs. So just to talk a little bit about measurements, and I think we'll continue to monitor this as we go along, you'll see on this slide that our total Facebook page likes have increased in about a year, about 9.4%. That's not unusual, but that jump was a little bigger than normal this year, and I think once we can get people more engaged in that Facebook page, or Twitter, or Instagram, we'll be able to increase that. And then, of course, going back to that, really trying to focus on videos and video images and images, the number of views of videos that we've posted on Facebook has gone up about 209%, so people are watching those, which is a good indication to us that we're on the right track with increasing that. And since the new website has launched, we have seen more visits to the website and more total page views. A 12% increase over the past year, and that can be attributed some to the additional students and families that we have in the district, but I think also more so, I think it's just an easier website to use, and we've really tried to clean it up, the content, so that it's more current. So some of our next steps, we are working with our Student Information Services Department to create a module for parents that they will be able to access, how they can access all the communication for their parents. SIS did put together a little tutorial for parents this year on how to use Infinite Campus, but really, we kind of need to get all that information into one place so that we can have something that we can send up that says, "Here's how you access Infinite Campus. Here's how you access the mobile app. Here's where you can look for information on our website. Here's how you can like our Facebook page." All of that in one place, in multiple languages, so that all of our parents will have easier access to that information. So that's big work we'll be doing this year. Like I said, we have already conducted an audit of all the school websites, and we are getting those information out to their site managers and trying to improve some of the information that's on our school website so that parents can have easy access to that information. And we do some of this already, but we're really going to focus on creating marketing materials for schools that would like to have those, or programs that are trying to draw more people into those, or trying to draw more students and families into those programs or schools. So we're working with them to do really focused marketing materials for different things. I think some of you that were on the Casby tour saw that we did a little... I think some of you that were on the Casby tour saw that we did a little something for Brentwood about their IB program. We'll continue to do that as we get requests, but we're really pushing with our principals if they have those, those needs, that we'll be able to fulfill those through our department. And then we really need to work on improving our parent engagement through that mobile app. Really, we want parents to be able to log onto that to get student information. We don't want them to just, to just upload the app and get, you know, calendar information for their schools, and while that's great, and they'll be able to get information from the website on there, we really want them to engage in that mobile app and really use it to get information for their students, because that's really how it's meant to be used, and we really want that to be an easy access for them to get that information. And while we know many of our parents may not have access to an actual computer, most have access to a smartphone, and really, that's why I think the mobile app is so important, because it levels the playing field for being able to access some of that information. So we'll be pushing that out again this year with the mobile app and trying to get more parents to utilize that. And then again, we're helping to facilitate monthly guest columns for the Board of Education, and we've already had one of those published. So we'll continue to do that with community engagement and work with you to get that done. And one thing that's not on this slide that I want to mention that's recently come to light is that we're really pushing towards being able to stream and do more live streaming through our website. We haven't done that yet partly because of expense, but also technology's just improved in that area a lot, and we would really, really like to be able to offer our families live streaming of things like graduations for grandparents who are out of state and can't come but still want to see their grandson or granddaughter graduate. Part of it is a technical issue through OIT, but with Tony Chek on as the new IT director, he's on board with this, and I think he'd be willing to look at how we can create hotspots at our District 6 stadium, say, for instance, so that we can livestream those events for our families. So that's going to be another big push for our department this year is, is to figure that out, and eventually livestream the Board of Education meetings on our website, too, so that when our antiquated equipment for our cable access channel breaks down, that we'll still be able to have people watch you in a live manner, so. But really, that's the technology we need to be working towards. Now, I think the days of cable access are kind of waning, and we need to be looking at more live streaming. Everybody has devices that they can livestream on, so that's just the direction we're hoping to move for that. So that's all I have on the update right now. We'll continue to work on all those issues, but I'd be happy to take any questions if you have any.
Ms. Solis.
I just want to thank you for all your effort in really trying to make sure that parents have as much access to information and to be able to, you know, check in on their kids. Kids may not always like it, but for us parents, it's really, really important, and I think it's good for that relationship between parent and child, so that child knows that the parent's involved, they're paying attention, they know what's going on, and so thank you for all the hard work, and please thank your staff.
I will, thank you. And I, I think that just goes to show the strength of your strategic plan as well, because really, interacting, interacting with and engaging our parents is, is seen throughout this strategic plan, and this is just one tool that we're finding will be helpful in help, in helping with that and to reach other goals throughout the Innovation 2020 Plan, so thank you.
Dr. Richard, please.
Oh, tending to be kind of low on the social media adopter, you know, scale. I am just so impressed with the diversity of avenues you have created and just so thankful that you're doing that, because I know that's what our parents are doing, and it's, it's a whole new world out there, so thank you. It's fabulous. I have been on the websites. The websites look great, and you can really see the improvement that are happening.
Thank you. Hopefully, that will continue to improve as we get more audits done and, and get that information updated.
And it, it didn't come, go past us with the fact that you've made some changes and within your group, and yet it's the same number of people, so you haven't increased staff at all, but thank you so much for all of your work.
Thank you.
Well, we all just say thank you very much, and Dr. Pilch, another example of good leadership all the way through the organization, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
No other comments or questions, I'm afraid we've run out of meeting. Therefore, this meeting will be adjourned.